The Malaport Common Council Meeting of April 19th, 2022 to order. Roll call, please.
Alderman Kirkowski.
Here.
Lorik.
Here.
Duqueak.
Here.
Alderman Marshall is excused. Alderman Gale.
Here.
Kuzikowski.
Here. Would all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please? Rich, you want to start us off?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Just a little housekeeping. Congratulations to all the alderpeople and their elections. Look forward to working with you again. And I know Lisa's not here, but congratulations to her as well. That will get us to the approval of minutes, and we have two sets to do, and we will do them separately. We'll first take the minutes of March 15th, 2022, please. Lorik moves to approve the minutes of March 15th, 2022.
Duqueak second.
Roll call.
Alderman Lorik.
Aye.
Duqueak.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Kuzikowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
And next, we have we have the minutes from 4/13/2022. Lorik moves to approve the minutes of 4/13/2022.
Duqueak, we'll second.
Roll call.
Alderman Duqueak.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Kuzikowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Stains.
Lorik.
Aye.
Okay, we have some council business to take care of, and that is the annual election of the Common Council President. And we do this by statute. I will open the floor for nominations. Nominations can be made by anybody, okay, for any alderperson. Once all the nominations are made, we can close. There'll be a motion to close the nomination, and if there's more than one, we'll do a paper vote, secret ballot. This is the only time you will vote by secret ballot. If there's more than one nomination received, as I said, we're going to close the nominations. If, by chance, there's only one nomination, we can close nominations and cast a unanimous ballot with a second thereafter on a roll call vote. Is that understood, gentlemen? Okay. I will now open the floor for nominations.
Alderman Duqueak moved to nominate Ken Gale for the position of Common Council President.
Alderman Kuzikowski, second. Second call, are there other nominations? Third call for nominations. I'll close. We will close. We can close the nominations by motion. And roll call, then vote. Lorik moves to close the nominations.
Kuzikowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Gale.
Aye.
Kuzikowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Duqueak.
Aye.
Now, we may move to motion on Ken Gale as Common Council President, and do a second, and roll call, please. You just got to make a motion, Rich.
Okay. Duqueak moved to approve Ken Gale as Common Council President. Kuzikowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Kuzikowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Duqueak.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Okay, gentlemen, congratulations.
Thank you, gentlemen.
I think I got that all covered. Okay. Good job. Again, I'm doing my best. Okay, congratulations. Once again, and again, we have a very good group here. We've got great things going on in the city and look forward to working with you all. Item five. It was a consideration of a resolution of appreciation to Joel Bateman, a retiring detective. Catherine, would you please read that into the record, please?
Certainly. Resolution number 12321. Resolution of appreciation to Joel H. Bateman. Whereas Joel H. Bateman began his employment with the City of Oak Creek on August 21st, 1995, as a full-time police officer. And whereas during his 26 years and seven months of service, Joel H. Bateman has been an integral part of the Police Department. Serving as a patrol officer early in his career, then rising to the rank of detective on June 14th, 2004. And whereas Joel H. Bateman has been a valuable employee during his years of dedicated service with the Oak Creek Police Department, always striving to enhance the quality of life for the citizens of the city, and has been a model teammate for those he has worked with. Being well-known for his work ethic, his dedication to the department, and his leadership. And whereas Joel H. Bateman received nine combined departmental acknowledgements and awards. Most notably are the notorious arrest for the 2006 double homicide investigation and the conviction in the Career Achievement Award. And whereas Joel H. Bateman served with honor, passion, and dedication in several sub-units of the Oak Creek Police Department, field training officer, use-of-force trainer, emergency response team, and training officers. Through Joel H. Bateman's leadership and dedication, the Oak Creek Police Department is more prepared, capable, and ready to serve the citizens of Oak Creek. And whereas for 25 years, Joel H. Bateman has been a member of the Emergency Response Unit, achieving the rank of Master Operator and being a team leader for the past 16 years. For 23 years, he has also been a use-of-force instructor, training and instructing in various disciplines. His expansive training and knowledge of tactics has benefited not only Oak Creek Police employees, but other law enforcement agencies, businesses, community entities, and area technical colleges. Whereas Joel H. Bateman was our first training officer from 2011 through 2016, developing and creating the current in-house training process to ensure every employee is properly trained. This change has saved over 50,000 annually in overtime, while at the same time increasing the amount of training employees get annually. And whereas during Joel H. Bateman's career, he attended many law enforcement certificates, utilizing the knowledge and training he received throughout his career and willingly sharing it with all the members of the Oak Creek Police Department. And whereas Joel H. Bateman was the recipient of the 2021 First Responder of the Year for the 21st Assembly's District of Wisconsin. And whereas Joel H. Bateman is retiring from the Oak Creek Police Department after completing 26 years and seven months of full-time service to the City of Oak Creek. Now therefore be it resolved by the Mayor and Common Council of the City of Oak Creek, for and on behalf of the citizens of the City of Oak Creek, that sincere gratitude and appreciation be extended to Joel H. Bateman for his years of professional, dedicated, and faithful service to the City of Oak Creek and the Police Department. And that the best wishes for good health and happiness be extended to Joel H. Bateman and his family for future years. Be it further resolved that this resolution be spread upon the minutes of this meeting, and that the city clerk is hereby directed to transmit a suitable copy thereof to Joel H. Bateman, passed and adopted this 19th day of April, 2022.
Thank you, Catherine.
Welcome.
Chief, would you like to say a few words on behalf? Okay. Thank you very much.
That's all I really have.
Okay. Thank you. I'll go to council. Anybody got some words for Joel?
I just thank him for his service, everything that he's done with the City of Oak Creek, and have a happy and healthy retiring, Joel.
You know, I'm just going to add a couple of words. Last year, I was contacted by Jesse Rodriguez, our Assembly person from the 21st District of Wisconsin, asking for the First Responder of the Year. And at the time, I called up Chief Anderson, and I said, "Do you have somebody?" Without hesitation, he came up with Joel Bateman. And it was like, one, two, three. He didn't hesitate at all. When, if you listen to the proclamation, you can understand why. He was an intricate part of the Police Department for 26 years, seven months. Heck of a career. His fingerprints are all over this city. You know, you don't notice all the little things people do until they're gone. And he was the recipient of that award, which just says a lot, not only about Joel, but the Oak Creek PD in general. So along with Chris and the rest of the council, I want to wish Joel very happy, long retirement. And I hope his retirement is three times longer than his career. How's that? So with that, on behalf of the citizens of Oak Creek, myself and the council, many good wishes, Joel. Can we get a motion, please? Lorik moves to adopt Resolution number 12321-041922. A resolution of appreciation for Joel H. Bateman, retiring detective.
Duqueak, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Duqueak.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Kuzikowski.
Aye.
And next is also a consideration of a resolution of commendation to Michael Marvell, retiring equipment operator two. Catherine, if you would, please.
Certainly. Resolution number 12322, resolution of commendation to Michael Marvell. Whereas Michael Marvell began his employment with the City of Oak Creek on May 2nd, 1994, as a part-time facilities maintenance technician, before he was hired full-time on June 5th, 1995. And whereas Michael Marvell transferred to Streets as an equipment operator on September 17th, 2001. And whereas Michael Marvell's position was reclassified to Equipment Operator Two on January 17th, 2016. And whereas many residents came to know Michael as a regular attendant at the city's recycling yard, providing assistance and a friendly smile over the years. And whereas Michael Marvell was a very effective employee during his years of service with the City of Oak Creek, Streets, and Department of Public Works, answering many calls for service from the community and providing immeasurable service to the residents of Oak Creek. And whereas Michael is retiring from his position of Equipment Operator Two with the City of Oak Creek, Department of Public Works, effective April 1st, 2022, completing 26 years and 10 months of full-time service to the City of Oak Creek. Now therefore be it resolved that the best wishes for good health and happiness be extended to Michael and his family in his retirement years. Be it further resolved that this resolution be spread upon the minutes of the meeting, and that the city clerk be and is hereby directed to transmit a suitable copy thereof to Michael Marvell, passed and adopted this 4th day of April, 2022.
Okay, thank you, Catherine.
Welcome.
Any words for Mike?
Alderman Duqueak, 3rd district. I had the pleasure of knowing Mike, obviously through the recycle center. But many of you may not know, he's a pretty decent comedian as well, and had that as a second gig. And during, I think I was at the community center as a director for almost 18 years. We booked him an unknown number of times. And I will say, besides serving the community at the recycle center, he did a heck of a job in keeping our community entertained as well. So, Michael, happy retirement to you, but don't give up that second job just yet either. So, congrats, Mike.
Well, great. Hey, buddy. You know, same as Rich, I would run across Mike at the recycling center on Saturday and take my yard waste. He was always very helpful, whole thing. But Mike was really, you know, a model employee for us. He hired on part-time facilities maintenance, moved into a full-time role, and became that operator two. That's really a coveted position down at DPW. But Mike, 26 years, 10 months worth of service. And as I said, you don't think about it much, but Oak Creek's real assets come in these employees, these dedicated employees that are out there, wind, rain, snow, Super Bowl Sunday, plowing, on days you would want to be out there and doing the things that most people really take for granted. So, once again, on behalf of myself, the entire council, and the citizens of Oak Creek, Mike, we wish you a long, happy retirement and a successful second career, if you so choose, on the comedy circuit. So with that, motion, please. Lorik moves to adopt Resolution number 12322-040422. A resolution of commendation to Michael Marvell, retiring equipment operator two.
Duqueak, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Lorik.
Aye.
Duqueak.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Kuzikowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
And our last recognition, resolution, consideration is appreciation to Michael E. Toman as 4th district alderperson. Catherine?
Resolution number 12323, resolution of appreciation to Michael E. Toman as the 4th district alderperson. Whereas Michael Toman was appointed by the Common Council to the position of 4th district alderperson on May 19th, 2003, completing the term of a newly-elected mayor, Richard Bolander, expiring April 2004. And whereas Mike Toman was elected to the position of 4th district alderperson in 2004 and are re-elected every two years thereafter. And whereas Mike Toman's ninth aldermatic term will expire on April 19th, 2022, after serving the City of Oak Creek and its constituents for 19 years. And whereas Mike Toman has served as 4th district alderperson under Mayor Richard Bolander, Alan Fekler, Stephen Scafidi, and Daniel Bakavich. And whereas during his 19-year tenure, Mike Toman was a member of the Personnel Committee, having served many years as chairperson, Finance Committee, Personnel and Finance Committee, Capital Improvement Projects, CIP Committee, Board of Public Works and Capital Assets, Community Center Board of Directors, Ad-Hoc Bender Park Committee, Library Board, Emergency Government Committee, and the Cable Advisory Board. And whereas Mike Toman was chosen by his fellow Common Council members to serve as council presidents in 2012. And whereas Mike Toman was committed and engaged in the strategic planning of the city and instrumental in the redevelopment of the Oak Creek Lakefront and Drexel Town Square. And whereas Mike Toman has served the best interests of the city and the residents of the 4th district. And whereas the City of Oak Creek has benefited from its contributions to city government as an alderperson. Now therefore be it resolved by the Mayor and the Common Council of the City of Oak Creek, for and on behalf of the citizens of the City of Oak Creek, their sincere appreciation be and the same is extended to Michael Toman for his service to the city. Be it further resolved that the resolution be spread upon the minutes of this meeting, and the city clerk is hereby directed to transmit a suitable copy thereof to Michael Toman, introduced and adopted this 19th day of April, 2022.
Thank you, Catherine. I know we've thanked Mike before, but any words for Mike? Steve?
Thank you, Mayor. I think it's safe to say that Mike being around for so long, that everybody sitting up here has benefited from his years of experience when they were the new person sitting up here. It's just, you would go to him with a question, and he would have the answers. And if you look at that, what he did for 19 years, a lot of it has to do with monetary, money, fiscal-type things that the city is, you know, a part of. And, you know, we're not having him around to deal with those issues and his experience. It's a tough shoe to fill, but I'm sure we'll trudge on and continue to survive. But, you know, he's taken with him just a vast knowledge of finances, and I wish him well, and I thank him for everything he did for me and probably everybody who sits up here.
Thank you, Steve. Rich?
Thank you, Mayor. Alderman Duqueak, 3rd district. You know, as Steve had mentioned, all of us up here at the desk, and Mayor Dan had mentioned as well, have had the opportunity to thank Mike for, you know, the amazing things he's done. 19 years of service to our community, you know, as an elected official. However, his footprint of service goes well beyond that. He's been a member of the Oak Creek Lions Club, I think, for probably well over 30 years. And just, I'd like to say to Mike, I know I personally will miss his leadership and his dedication. He certainly was a mentor to me. I know not only myself, I have a pretty good feeling that a lot of us up here at the desk and in our community will deeply miss, again, that leadership and dedication. Thank you, Mike.
Kim?
Well, yeah, thanks, very much. I just, Mike, obviously you heard these words before, but I just want for the community, the continuing experience that Michael brought to the Personnel Committee is what I valued most in his experiences. 19 years he's served, a lot of cycles of bargaining and contract negotiations and other issues that come before that committee. His level of experience is really very useful for the community as a whole, so we really appreciate his service there. He's been an unbelievable advocate for the lakefront, which we're now finally seeing actually some infrastructure and some hard building about to happen there. So that has been a project that's been long on the common, and Michael has been an advocate from day one on that. So we should thank him for that, and the value that will bring to the community for the foreseeable future.
Thank you, Kim. Chris?
Alderman Kuzikowski, 6th district. Just, I want to just really say, Mike, besides what he does as an alderman for Oak Creek, to hit on what Rich said, he has been very involved with the Lions for 30-plus years. But really, when it comes to things that Mike did, fiscal responsibility was something that he taught a lot about, and he wanted to make sure that the citizens of Oak Creek were getting the best, you know, thing for their buck. And that he worked feverishly to have, as part of the ad hoc committee, to have the Lake Vista work done. So, thanks, Mike. Happy retirement.
Andrew?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank Mike. Mike said some very kind words about me personally and the staff at the last couple of meetings. I just really want to thank Mike for his support over the years. And the next time we sit down, I'll remind him, I remember about four months into my tenure here, I sat down with each of you individually, and Mike led with, "I really liked the way things were going before you got here." And he didn't mean that as a, I don't think he meant it as a snipe by any means, but he really enjoyed the previous, my predecessor. And I said, "Well, you know, give me some time." And Mike really supported me personally early on in my career and the administration, and he continued to do so until he left. And echoing what Ken had said, that lakefront, you know, I've only been at this in the city for about six years now. The rest of the staff that's been here much longer knows, Mike never let us take the eye off the ball of the investment in that lakefront. And we will continue to carry that, carry that to the finish line. It'll be a journey, but Mike always saw the aspirational potential of that lakefront, and we will continue to work at that every day until we can see that come to fruition. So thank you, Mike, for your service and for your support.
Yes, and, you know, just a couple of things that really stand out. 19 years, that is a long run of serving as an alderperson or doing public service. You don't get a lot of pats on the back, so we're giving it to them now. Most phone calls aren't always thank yous. They're usually problems. That's why you take the position. Mike never backed away from that. At 19 years, I know Art Abenschein had a long run, probably 25-plus. Betty Copeland was here about 20. Mike was on the original council when I got elected. That council, when I came on, was the first one to actually put money towards the lake. And he helped spearhead that, along with others on that council as well. And everybody thought, you know, that's really a stretch, and look at what it's become. So that's really a testament to his focus down there. And I just, I'm just going to leave it simple, because Mike was a pretty simple, straightforward guy, as Andrew kind of put it. He didn't mix a lot of words. Says, "Mike has served the best interest of the city and the residents of the 4th district." And that's what he did, and he did it really well, and he did it for a long time. So our thanks, again, you know, everybody has their time, and things move on. We're going to be fine and the whole deal. But he does take a lot of institutional knowledge with him, as it's been stated up here. And if you were keeping score out there, tonight we did three proclamations with 72 and a half years of institutional knowledge of the City of Oak Creek leaving in one sweep. That's a lot to replace. But the fortunate part is all these individuals paved the path for others, and they left it better than they found it. So I feel we're in great shape. So, again, Mike, thank you for your service on behalf of everybody in the city, the council, and myself. It's been a pleasure. So, thank you. Motion, please.
Gale moved to approve Resolution 12323-041922. A resolution of appreciation to Michael E. Toman as 4th district alderperson.
Kuzikowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Duqueak.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Kuzikowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Okay. That will bring us to our first public hearing and its consideration for an unlimited athletic club LLC, for an amendment to the existing conditional use permit to allow for an indoor commercial rec facility within a portion of an existing multi-tenant industrial building and a property at 140 East Rossin. Catherine, would you please read that better into the record, please?
Certainly. Public hearing number one is to consider a request submitted by Pablo Daval, but maybe not, Davalos Alonso Unlimited Athletic Club LLC for an amendment to the existing conditional use permit to allow for an indoor commercial recreation facility, fitness center, within a portion of the existing multi-tenant industrial building on the property at 140 East Rossin Avenue. The applicant is Pablo Davalos Alonso Unlimited Athletic Club LLC. Property owner is East Rossin Avenue LLC. Legal description there follows. Date of notice is March 23rd, 2022.
Thank you, and good evening. My name is Doug Seymour. I'm the Director of Community Development for the City of Oak Creek. And the first of a few public hearings this evening is for the property at 140 East Rossin Avenue for an unlimited athletic club. This property, if you recall, is a kind of flex industrial property. Have several different conditional uses already attached to that, whether it be a medical support services, another indoor recreational facility, a behavioral treatment services clinic, and our recreational facility, as well as an additional clinic. And there's, it's just kind of a flexible thing. It's not truly industrial, it's not truly commercial, but it really fills a void in this community in terms of the types of businesses that need these types of spaces. The proposal this evening is for an athletic club to occupy one of the units within that building. The unlimited athletic club will provide personal training, group classes, and gym memberships. And there's a narrative that goes into that a little bit further as part of your packet. Really, only one employee is anticipated with a total peccot density of 20 at any given time. So it's not a hugely impactful use from the perspective of traffic or use facility. The hours of operation would be 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM, seven days a week. As I had mentioned, the parking for this facility would be within a common parking field for the entire development. It's up to the management of that, those buildings to manage the parking for each of those tenants, and we expect that that will not be an issue in this case. The Plan Commission at their meeting of March 22nd did review this proposal, and they did recommend their approval subject to conditions and restrictions that are attached. This is a public hearing. Now, if anyone has any questions or comments regarding the proposed conditional use permit, please approach the podium, give your name and address, and proceed to address your questions and comments to the Common Council. This public hearing is now open.
Thank you, Doug. And as Doug said, this is a public hearing. I will make three announcements. This will be the first. Second call. Third and final call. Anybody wishing to speak, please approach the podium. We will need your name and address for the minutes. Okay, we will now close the public hearing and move on to item nine, which is consideration of the ordinance approving that conditional use permit to allow for the indoor recreation facility within a portion of the existing multi-tenant industrial building at 140 East Rossin. Gentlemen, Steve?
Thank you, Mayor. Alderman Kirkowski, 1st district. First, I haven't had any contact with anybody pro or against this item. Our food for thought, just for council to think about, is that if you notice, and this came up talking to the city planner the other day with regards to some, another company that wishes to go into this development. And you noticed that not necessarily everybody going in there is an M1-type business. It's more of a B1 business. So she's going to talk with the St. Johns, the realty folks, and see if this, if that's the focus of their desire with tenants, is more of a business versus manufacturing. There may be a need to try and change the zoning of this facility from M1 to B1 because of how many businesses we've gotten in there versus manufacturing business. So I think Doug might want to elaborate on that, but I just wanted to bring that to the attention because something will come up in another month or so, and it's going to be the same situation.
Certainly a thing, and thank you, Alderman. Certainly an anomaly when we have this many conditional use permits attached to one property. And as I explained before, it really goes back to the unique nature of the space. And it's not, you know, it's not your typical manufacturing space, but it's not a strip mall. It's kind of in between, and it's a flexible building, and that's what they're, they're designed for. Just that, I mean, given the market that's out there, it seems to be a little bit heavier on select commercial uses. So you're absolutely correct. We're going to contact them and see if it best fits their needs moving forward if we craft some type of zoning that would allow for more of the, to recognize some of the hybrid-type uses that are finding their way via the marketplace.
That's the only thing I wanted to bring up. Thanks.
Great, Steve.
And a useful, Doug, that'll streamline this, this kind of process?
I mean, hopefully, hopefully we don't have a conditional use permit for every tenant in the building.
So far, we've had five, in counting this.
Total spaces in there, Doug?
Oh, it's demizable. I'm not sure how many total tenants there could be. There's two buildings that are constructed right now with a third planned.
Replanted?
And they're being creative in the uses and what they're doing, to say the least. And so.
If it's streamlined, the zoning.
Yeah, and that's been the talk, because there's been so many that come in, and they work there. They just have to be figured out. So, anyone else? Okay, seeing none. Motion on nine, please. The council make a motion.
Would you also make a motion to approve ordinance number three, zero, three, five, approving a conditional use permit amendment to allow for an indoor recreation facility, fitness center within a portion of the existing multi-tenant industrial building on the property at one four zero East Rossin Avenue.
Oracle second.
All call.
Alderman Gail?
Hi.
Gudzakowski?
Hi.
Kirkowski?
Hi.
Lorik?
Hi.
Dufiek?
Hi. In our next public hearing, this consideration of a request submitted by Jacob Doris Leo's Playland LLC doing business as Central Bark for an amendment to the existing conditional use permit to allow for an increase in the number of dogs allowed onsite for the existing animal boarding kennel daycare facility with an outdoor exercise area on the property at ten seventy-five West North Branch Drive. Catherine, would you please read that into record?
Certainly. Public hearing number two is to consider a request submitted by Jacob Doris Leo's Playland LLC doing business as Central Bark for an amendment to the existing conditional use permit to allow for an increase in the number of dogs allowed onsite for the existing animal, animal boarding kennel dog daycare facility with outdoor exercise area on the property at one zero seven five West North Branch Drive. The applicant is Jacob Doris Leo's Playland LLC, doing business as Central Bark. Property owner is North Branch Industrial LLC. There follows the legal description. Date of notice was March twenty-third, two thousand twenty-two.
Catherine, Doug?
Thanks again. This, this public hearing is on a request to amend the conditional use permit for the animal boarding kennel facility at ten seventy-five West North Branch Drive. Originally, when the conditional use permit was issued for this facility, uh, the conditions limited the number of animals to forty-three at any given time. The applicant is requesting an increase in the number of dogs allowed in this facility to eighty-five. And per the narrative that was submitted by the applicant, there would, there would be no additions to the building on the property. But the rationale for, this is they are converting unused space in the building uh, towards the, um, housing, uh, and the kenneling of those, those dogs. So, uh, so the building's not changing this except for interior to that. Uh, the applicant provides some information about, uh, the types of kennels that they'd be planning on using for that. I won't go into that. You can look at that yourself. Um, the council may be familiar with, uh, some of the other similar establishments in the city. And in particular, there was one that was approved not too far from here that, uh, allows up to a hundred and twenty-five dogs of the facility. Bigger facility, but what that equates to is about sixty-three square feet per dog. Uh, the applicant's proposal, a much, a little bit smaller facility would, uh, coming at about sixty square feet per dog. And there are, there are licensing requirements for kennels in our, our code, uh, that all they, each of those establishments in this one in particular would have to, uh, adhere to that. Uh, so with that in mind, and after reviewing this at their meeting of March twenty-second, the plan commission did recommend approval of the amendment to the conditional use permit subject to the attached conditions and restrictions. Again, this is a public hearing. Anyone with any questions or comments, well, please proceed to the podium, give your name and address and proceed to address your questions or comments to the common council. This public hearing is now open.
Thank you, Doug. Uh, this will be the first hearing. Anybody wishing to speak? Second call. And third and final call, anybody wishing to speak, please approach podium and give your name and address. We'll now close the public hearing and go on to item eleven, which is consideration of it. Conditional use permit amending the allowable, the allowable maximum of eighty-five dogs onsite at any time for an existing animal boarding kennel dog daycare facility located at ten seventy-five West North Branch. Gentlemen, Steve?
Thank you, Mayor Alderman Kirkowski, first district. Again, no, uh, no comment or no contact with anybody that pros or cons against this, this matter.
Right. Uh, Ken?
Um, Doug, do you happen to have a field, you know, maybe even from the competitor that's just up the street here had, that sought that increasing animals in their building? Whether or not that's, I did notice that they don't propose any staff increases for essentially nearly doubling their animal capacity. So I'm wondering how that, is there, is there best practices in the industry now that allow that or how are they?
You know, I, I don't know that, uh, Alderman Gail. I mean, uh, I, I can speak as being a, a user of, uh, one of these facilities, not this one. But, uh, the staffing levels at that particular facility seem adequate to accommodate the number of animals that are being
Which facility?
At the one on Liberty, Liberty, Liberty Inn.
Okay.
Don't want to make any norseman's.
Yeah, I understand, but, um, yeah. So would you have a feel for what staff per or animals per staff there?
Well, what, in the individual rooms, so to speak, that they had, there's probably one staff member for maybe ten to fifteen dogs in the play area.
And this is, this is seeking permitting for boarding and kenneling, right?
That is.
Boarding would be considered overnight?
Yes.
And what, uh, who, do we regulate this or is the state regulate kennels from a?
There is some language in the, in the city's code with respect to kennels. And I'm sure it's, you know, that's not the only regulation. I'm sure it is also regulated by the state.
Well, uh, planning really kind of dug into this a little deeper. And again, um, we had the applicants in and they take dogs out regularly. Um, a lot of it's daycare stuff and dogs are exercised and taken out to relieve themselves in the area as needed. So, um, we didn't have an issue with it, uh, having gone through the competitor a few years back, as Doug stated, we had a pretty good feel for, uh, where, where they should be. So, um, much needed facility, obviously they're looking to expand and, um, you know, they keep cameras on the dogs at all times and the whole deal. So pretty well regulated internally. So, uh, planning dug through it and was pretty happy with it. Anything else, guys? Okay, um, seeing no more, um, motion, please.
Kirkowski make a motion to adopt ordinance number three, zero, three, four, approving a conditional use permit amendment to allow a maximum of eighty-five dogs onsite at any time for the existing animal boarding kennel dog daycare facility located at one zero seven five West North Branch Drive.
Oracle second. All call.
Alderman Gudzakowski?
Hi.
Kirkowski?
Hi.
Lorik?
Hi.
Dufiek?
Hi.
Gail?
Hi.
Okay. Uh, item twelve, uh, again, public hearing. Uh, consider a request submitted by Ryan Jansen, Jansen Bruckner LLC to rezone to RD one, two-family residential, no change to the floodway or flood fringe. Uh, and to establish a planned unit development on the portions of property at six forty-one and eight nineteen R East Drexel Avenue. Catherine, would you read that in, please?
Certainly. Public hearing number three is to consider a request submitted by Ryan Jansen, Jansen Bruckner LLC to rezone to RD one, two-family residential, no change to FW floodway or FF flood fringe districts. And to establish a planned unit development on portions of the properties at six four one and eight one nine where East Drexel Avenue. Applicant is Ryan Jansen, Jansen Bruckner LLC. Property owner is David and Elizabeth Eden, Thomas and Patricia Utke. Legal description, their description there follows. Date of notice is March twenty-third, two thousand twenty-two.
Thank you, Catherine. Doug?
Thanks again. Uh, the applicant with the support of the current property owners is requesting approval for these properties to be resowned RD one, two-family residential as well as a planned unit development for that. Uh, as a mayor and as city clerk has stated, no changes were made to the floodway or the flood fringe at this point in time. Now, per the submitted narrative, uh, the planning development, which is tentatively named Stonebrook on the Park, includes sixty-six single-family residences and thirty-three side-by-side, side-by-side ranch-style condominium buildings. Uh, but the two single-family detached residential development lots, I'll show you here. Uh, there are additional lots which are part of the properties which are not part of the planning development because they would remain, retain their RS three zoning and would be developable under that, that zoning district. So each condo unit would be sold and owned, although future owners could make the determination to lease the units. There are six different models that would be constructed throughout the development, uh, using some, some craftsmen architecture, which would allow for a more cohesive neighborhood feel. So it's not a situation where we're going to have, you know, thirty-three different building types. There will be, they'll, they'll choose from a number of different models for what you can see as part of your packet. Uh, each building would range in size from, I think it should be each unit should range in size from fifteen hundred seventeen hundred square feet above ground living space. And we'll incorporate fiber cement siding and stone accents as primary exterior building materials. And you do have some concepts, uh, that are as part of your packet and we can kind of go through those. It's just indicative of the type. I mean, the, the architecture varies a little bit, but you can kind of see that this is the style of the condo units that are being proposed for that. As you can also see, there would be attached two car garages provided per unit with available parking on the driveway. So the minimum parking requirements for single and two-family residential developments are two per dwelling. So we can see that those are being met and exceeded in this, uh, particular instance. Uh, the setbacks for the most part are being met. There are some interior setbacks which are being modified as part of the planning and development process. SAP does not have any concerns for those requested deviations. Uh, the maximum unit densities do appear to be met in the proposal. Uh, the maximum density is allowed as five point eight units per net acre. Or we'll be up to eighty-two units total, uh, which excludes of those wetland areas. So we are within those maximum allowable densities. Uh, there are wetlands on the property and you can kind of see the area, uh, in that dotted area, which is, which will be preserved, uh, as part of the development plan. Uh, there will be a public street, an extension of Quincy Avenue coming to the south, uh, which would cross that wetland area. There would be setbacks for those wetlands. So it would also be a east-west street uh, within the development as well as a cul-de-sac of the south end. One of the aspects of this development is that there would be an emergency access, uh, which would tie into the, the park drive, the Aben shine park drive. Again, emergency access only. That would not be, uh, you know, the, the typical, uh, public street that would be open now for, for users of the park or for the subdivision. I mean, the main access would be off of Quincy Drive. Uh, the plan commission reviewed the proposed request and conditions and restrictions to regulate this proposed planning and development. Uh, at their meeting of March, March eighth and March twenty-second, they recommended approval of both the rezoning, PUD and the conditions and restrictions. This being a public hearing, I would ask that anyone who has any questions or comments regarding the proposal, please approach the microphone, give your name, address and proceed to address your questions or comments to the common council. This public hearing is now open.
Thank you, Doug. Uh, as Doug stated, this is a public hearing. I will be making three calls. This will be the first call. Anybody wishing to speak? Second call, anybody wishing to speak? Third and final call, if you wish to speak, please approach podium, give your name and address. Okay, I'll come on up, sir.
My name's Ryan Jansen.
Oh, gotta get you on the mic, sir.
My name's Ryan Jansen. I'm the developer, uh, address S nine eight W three, three, two, seven, zero, Genevieve Drive in Maguano. Uh, just one thing I wanted to add to, and I don't know if this can be written into, um, into the ordinance is that, but the architectural renderings that you see, there may be instances where you see a mirror image of that.
Oh.
And I don't, I just, I don't know if that was going to be a hang up later on down the road, but you're trying to be
It shouldn't be really right now. It's just the rezone. So that's what we're focused on, not so much product.
Kerry was adamant that I had all the renderings in here. So I'd love to get them in to have all the models set for you guys so you could see what the, the buildings would look like. But I just didn't want to get to a point on the road where
Bringing that up. It's, it's very kind of you.
Yeah, we're gonna flip, we gotta flip flop that one.
Um, so third and final call, anybody else wishing to speak? Okay, we will now close the public hearing and go on to item thirteen, which is consider, consideration of ordinance number three, zero, three, three, approving an RD one, two-family residential, no change to the floodway or flood fringe districts and to establish a planned unit development on the portions of the property at six forty-one and eight nineteen R East Drexel Avenue. Open it up to the council. Um, man, I, I, I'm slow on this one. Rich, I think you beat him.
Okay. Steve, is this your district? So you can go first.
Yeah, go ahead.
Go ahead, Steve. All of them Kirkowski, first district. Um, unlike the other two, uh, matters, I did receive uh, some comments, emails and phone calls from neighboring residents and their main concern was traffic on Drexel Avenue, which, um, okay, Drexel Avenue is, is a main arterial, arterial road in the city, but we'll get to that in a minute. Um, keeping the Aben shine park a serene environment um, and potential flooding. And, um, so to address those three issues that, that were brought to my attention, I, I talked to Doug, Doug Seymour about a couple of those issues. And first off, and, and I did have an issue with that road that was coming out of the subdivision onto uh, the drive there for Aben shine park. My, my question was if it's going to be used on a regular basis, then do we need to improve that road? Uh, going from there out to Drexel, but since it's only going to be an emergency access road, um, uh, that isn't necessary unless things change. But, you know, my concern was people coming in and out on two, two ways in, in and out of that subdivision, but we're just going to have one. Uh, with regards to traffic, um, you know, Drexel Avenue got much busier once we opened up that interchange at, at I ninety-four. So there's no question that it's, it's a busier road, but, um, it is as it sits now, it, it's designed for the heavy amount of traffic that it's getting. Now, now there might be some needs for some revisions with regards to, is there going to be a right turn lane going into the subdivision? You know, that Doug said they haven't looked at that yet. So, you know, that to me would be uh, something to look at because the way the traffic patterns are, are on Drexel Avenue, you have one lane in each direction. And then you have areas where you can park and there are areas where you can't park. And, uh, so I think engineering needs to take a look at the, the whole lane configuration on Drexel Avenue to try and make traffic flow a little bit better. There was concern with, uh, traffic accidents at Clement and Drexel. And I see the chief, chief left, but I was going to ask him about that. Yes, there have been a a number of accidents there at Clement and Drexel. I don't know exactly how many over the past two, three, four years. I'll tell you though that uh, when residents complain about the, the amount of traffic on Drexel, a, and I sense that fear. When I, I traveled Drexel Avenue almost exclusively, uh, you, you come up to, if you're going east and you come up to Clement Avenue and you got, turn on your turn signal. Uh, there's no left turn lane there. So the car behind you will see the left turn signal and will move over. And then I cringe if the car behind that car doesn't see the left turn signal. And is he going to hit me and then push me into oncoming traffic? So uh, we've, we've had accidents, but nothing has risen to the level of where we need to put, you know, stop signs there. There certainly won't be traffic lights there because it hasn't reached that level yet. So, um, well, I appreciate the concerns with traffic, but traffic, i- i- it is, it could get worse even without a, a, a development there because you I, I think it's going to get a little easier with the Drexel construction there east of Howell or west of Howell, but nonetheless, you know, it, it's made for more traffic than what it's seeing. Um,
And, and maybe, Alderman, I can provide some, some color to that. Uh, and certainly, uh, I would defer to the city engineer with respect to the geometry of, of those turn lanes and intersections and, and you're right, I mean, Drexel Avenue through its initial design, uh, some choices were made then to not have four lanes of traffic in some cases. So you do have some different cross sections and some different uh, turn lanes and some, and in many cases, no turn lanes. As I understand it, as we move forward, there may be some planning in, in it, uh, being efforted to, uh, do some design changes to Drexel Avenue as part of some future years CIP. And certainly we're aware of those, uh, issues on Drexel Avenue and will look to correct some of those as part of those redesigns.
Thank you. As, as far as, as far as the serenity of Aben shine park, I, I love Aben shine park. I mean, I, I walk the trails periodically and, you know, umpire baseball games there and stuff like that. And, uh, but we've got a number of parks in the city that have houses that surround them. And so we're talking about a park, a park that is supposed to be used by the public. And Aben shine, as it turns out, not only has the baseball fields, it has the disc golf, it has the, um, what's that? What's that other field that's behind there?
Cricket, cricket.
Cricket, has cricket and, and a skate park there. And if, uh, if luck has, goes our way, we're going to have a full-time beer garden there with a, with a structure and added parking and stuff. So, you know, that's a, that's a community park to be used for a variety of purposes. And it has a little area of it that is nice and serene. You walk the trails behind, behind the woods and stuff like that. That's And it has a little area of it that is nice and serene. You walk the trails behind, behind the woods and stuff like that. That's, that's nice. But I don't perceive this as being a major, major residential development that's going to cause major traffic issues to Drexel Avenue because it's built to handle what we have. And the, most of the houses are going to have backyards up against the park, most of them. So we're still going to have that park feeling, even though instead of looking out and seeing a farm field, you're going to see the backs of some houses.
And Abenashine Park, and you're right, it's a community park and community parks involve lots of different activities. But that's not to say that we're just trying to, you know, pack every different type of activity into Abenashine Park. As a matter of fact, the city in conjunction with the Metropolitan Sewerage District and the, and FEMA, I believe, recently cooperated and partnered on the acquisition of the greenhouse property to the south and east of the park, which will be combined with the park to provide additional open space.
So the park's going to get a little bigger on the southeast corner of the park there. So there was something else I wanted to add, but the thought lost me. So I guess if it comes back, I'll say it.
Comes back.
Give me the sorry.
Richard, I did just one brief question. Doug, in many of the drawings here, we have a red shaded area just to the north of the wetlands on the east side of the development. And it is described as an area of floodplain compensation.
Sure. So when, when you, when you cross the, that wetland, which we're doing with the public street here, you have to compensate for the losses to the floodplain?
Okay.
And that's what it would be compensated.
Okay, makes sense. Thank you, Doug.
And Greg, Alderman Lorik, second district. I don't have an issue with the rezone. And I understand that's what the agenda is. I just have a quick question on the design. And I do, I apologize. I don't know if I brought this up already regarding this item or the other two family off of putes. I know we had a lot of discussion about the garage set aheads in the new code. And some of these designs make it look like the garage is quite a bit forward. Do you know, do they all meet the new?
Actually, this, all of the remodels in this PUD beat that.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay, go ahead, Steve.
Thank you. I remember what I was going to bring up. So we have a concept of what we want to build there and oftentimes when things are finalized, we run in, we run into issues, maybe with landscaping, you know, on some projects or how something fits it, fits in or whatever. And then the residents will again bring that to our attention. And it has never failed me to have an issue be resolved by a developer when the residents have a concern. So I'm confident that if we have something that crops up that we don't know about, that we'll be able to resolve it. But thank you.
Okay, thanks, Steve.
Again, Danny, I think you guys on planning probably can answer this. And I don't remember it's not necessarily pertinent to the rezone, but lot three and four. Is that, are they held for something in particular or?
Those are going to.
Stormwater is shown on other parts. I'm not sure.
I thought three and four were being held back right now.
Because they're not part of the rezoning, those would be single family lots. And they're zoning single family right now.
Oh, okay. So common ownership or maintaining the current ownership?
That would be, that would be outside of the ownership structure of the, of the condo.
Uh, no, we did go over this at planning. Oh, I'm sorry. Andrew.
Sorry, Mayor. Just, just quickly, I don't know that the council is going to have another kick at this after the rezoning unless there's the PUD. So.
No, they will, they will not. And that, thank you. Typically, when you see, for instance, multifamily PUDs, the Plan Commission comes back and approves the site and landscaping and architectural plans. Being that these are two family units, they do not need that approval. So, I mean, that's why we have the different models attached exceedingly to the conditions and restrictions. So these can come in and apply for building permits. And provided they meet the conditions and restrictions, and the condo plot that will be submitted, I mean, they would not come back to the Plan Commission.
Thanks, Doug. I just wanted to be sure about that because I just wanted to thank the developer for bringing this forward. I know that staff has had multiple iterations of proposals. Quite a challenging piece of property. Actually, it doesn't seem so, but we've grappled with this and it's been grappled with for the better part of a decade. And I think this is the result that the the landowner wanted to see in the long term for for his or her, their best interests. And this is a need that we have in the community. It's a significant emphasis in our strategic action plan to bring on more single family homes into the community to balance out that housing portfolio we have. So just thank you. I think it's a great product. It'll be really welcomed and you probably will do very well. Just quickly though, Doug, is there an opportunity, if you go back to the, to the layout? Is there an opportunity for a trail connection between lot five and six there? Or are we dealing with? It looks like maybe some wetland issues there, but if there's a way to connect, I think that's a segment of the Oak Leaf, if I'm not mistaken.
Oh, sure.
If there's a way to connect without going to the road, I think.
The grade change is pretty substantial there.
Okay.
And I thought about that as well. And given that in the, the difference between eight or nine lots to the north is the crossing in Drexel Avenue. So ideally, I'd love to see that, but I think that the, the grade change makes that challenging.
Don't come off of Drexel's though.
Oh, it's not.
You can. It's fairly steep there too. So.
No, we did go through this at planning. It's a nice development. It fits the property well. We did see a lot of different things proposed here. Great use. I think it's going to be, it's a nice looking product. I said this at planning, I think they're going to fly off the shelves. I think you're going to be very successful in what you do here. So not only do I want to thank the developer, but the property owner as well for holding out and really doing it right. This is much needed in Oak Creek. So there's no further discussion. Motion then on thirteen.
Kerkowski Make a motion to adopt ordinance number three zero three three approving a rezone to RD one two family residential, no change to FW floodway or FF flood fringe districts and to establish a planned unit development on portions of the properties at six forty one and eight one nine R East Drexel Avenue.
Oracle second, call.
Alderman Kerkowski.
Hi.
Lorik.
Hi.
Duke.
Hi.
Gale.
Hi.
Kuzakowski.
All right.
Ken, good luck. Look forward to it. Again, it's much needed. I'm happy to see this type of development come. Thank you.
I'd actually comment. Thank you both for mentioning that.
Sir, can you come on up to the mic? And then we'll need your name again.
Ryan Jansen, the, the developer. I've got a big development going on in Mesquite, one hundred and thirty nine lots, and they're putting me through the wringer. You know, bringing water from a half mile away to the tune of, you know, six hundred grand, a booster station of the tune of four hundred grand. And, you know, I was talking to the guy that was consulting for me and he said, you know, a guy can eat a lot of crap if he knows he's appreciated and he knows that, you know, all it would take was what you guys kind of said here today to like make me feel like comfortable that we're on the same team and that we're all, you know, you know, had the the same intentions. So I really appreciate you guys actually mentioning that.
Keep this in mind if you ever do another one. And again, to the property owners, you know, they acquired this property and and they've had it for a good, long time. I don't know the circumstances of it, but it's always a risk on them too. You know, they've paid taxes on it over the years and it's good to see, you know, if they decided to get rid of it, it's the use they intended and that everybody's doing well with it. So again, this is welcome development. As Andrew said, it fits our strategic plan. And again, keep us in mind, you want to do one hundred and thirty nine homes? Doug can help you out. And we won't hit you for near the money. Okay, enough levity for tonight. Moving on, new business. So items fourteen, fifteen and sixteen are the mayor and common council aldermatic appointments. And these will be done on May the third, twenty twenty two at our next, on our next council agenda. Just to let you know, the mayoral aldermatic appointments are for small claims, library board, tourism, community development authority, and then the common council president is personnel finance, license, plan, Board of Health, Emergency Management Advisory Committee, Parks and Rec Commission and Board of Public Works and Capital Assets. So we do need a motion to hold items fourteen, fifteen and sixteen. We can do it singularly in three motions, or you can do it in one if you mention all three items.
Again, we'll move to hold items fourteen, fifteen, sixteen until the next common council meeting of May third, two thousand twenty two. Kuzakowski, second, call.
Alderman Lorik.
Hi.
Duke.
Hi.
Gale.
Hi.
Kuzakowski.
Hi.
Kerkowski.
Hi.
Dan is the custom, myself and Ken will get holy and we'll, we'll talk about assignments and make sure everybody's good with their assignment. And if things haven't changed. So moving on, item seventeen, community development. It's consideration of a motion to approve the construction of a sand volleyball court at Willow Heights Park at a cost not to exceed twenty eight thousand dollars. Doug? Oh, what do we got, Doug? Already got someone on streaming?
No, I just wanted to bring up the. Hopefully. Go over again?
No, while we're killing time, this is interesting. We just talked about having homes close to a park and you may not be familiar with Willow Heights, but it's in my neighborhood. This, the homes are bucked the park and the volleyball court's going to be rather close, but they found it acceptable. So you can kind of see how the homes surround the park.
Excellent. Thanks, Mayor. So in November of twenty twenty, actually, the Parks Recreation Commission was presented the proposal to install a fifty by forty sand volleyball court at Willow Heights Park. It was a request for resident acknowledging that the, the growth in the sport from the high school level and their recent success. And obviously, and they had some family members that were participating in that and wondered if there could be a sand volleyball court developed at Willow Heights Park so that they didn't have to travel to some of the other facilities that were located throughout the city. So as part of the request, the commission staff did an analysis. And you can see kind of the, the rough location of the proposed sand volleyball court in Willow Heights Park in the yellow dashes. So wetlands do consume a lot of that park to the north and to the northeast along the Oak Creek. And, and the size of that wetlands does limit the potential sand volleyball court, sand volleyball court area to kind of the area which is shown in yellow. So this project would likely require the removal of six trees and there's some one hundred and eighty five cubic yards of dirt and the addition of three hundred tons of sand and, and all, all issues which are looked at by the city engineering department and DPW. And obviously, you know, that, they did have some concerns about that, but nothing which was insurmountable. Staff analysis did show that the existing nine volleyball courts, seven of which are, which are sand throughout the city are, are currently underutilized. So if the council does approve this request, that will be kind of staff's recommendation that, that the Parks Commission take a look at now whether some of those other facilities and some other areas of the city might be repurposed for some recreational facilities or activities that are more in tune with the recreational demands in those locations. So construction of the court is proposed to be done completely in-house using DPW staff and resources. And the Parks and Recreation Commission did approve a motion to recommend the construction of a sand volleyball court at Willow Heights Park at their December sixteenth, twenty twenty one meeting. So be happy to answer any questions that you have. I know that Andrew has some thoughts that he wanted to share with you about that. But that has been brought forward for your consideration this evening.
Right. Thank you, Doug. Questions for Doug, starting with Rich?
Two, two paragraphs of the council report concerned me a bit. I mean, the, the one is the staff analysis showing that currently we probably have too much capacity in regard to sand volleyball courts. So my question would be, why do it in the first place? That's number one. And then number two, Matthew Sullivan, our city engineer, has expressed concerns about the surrounding area. Have, have his concerns been factored into that twenty eight thousand dollar expense for the construction of that new court?
They, I mean, I can't speak for Matt and, but I believe that they have, yes.
That's for number two. But number one.
Well, I mean, it's a, it's a fair question, right? And is it a question of are they in the right place? You know, why aren't some of them being utilized? And when we, when we have, there's been expressed some demand for that in this particular neighborhood. So again, all fair questions and that's why, you know, we're thinking as a staff, if the commission concur, if the council concurs with the commission and approves this, we should want to take a look at some of those other places where they're not being utilized. And see how we can repurpose those to the benefit of those neighborhoods also.
So Rich, can I just, but in one second, just to Doug clarify, the last sentence of the third paragraph does state though, that the cost estimates do not include the cost per pair.
Of a tree.
So well, you have to imagine you're moving that much sand and dirt on a, on a park path. There's some fixing that'll need to be done. If you're using city equipment, I'll tell you. So.
I have another comment, a little question. Chris, you're on the Parks Committee, Parks Committee. Was there significant demand from the residents of that area? The report indicates it was one resident?
Honestly, it's been so long since we talked about it at Parks because it was in November of twenty twenty. So I just, it's been, I don't recall all of the discussion that we, because I think the November meeting, I actually was out of town for, for hunting. So.
Is there any way to, to get that information? Again, if this is being done on the request of one, one family or one individual? I, I guess I have some major problems with that. And I think a lot of us here, up here on the, on the desk and out in the audience know of some other requests that are.
Yeah, certainly, certainly a fair question. And to be fair, it was a request by, by one homeowner.
So can I provide a little bit of background on, at least from my perspective on this, because it hasn't been as lineal as the decision making process as we would have liked. So typically what the staff would do is approach the Parks and Recreation Commission early on in the budgetary process, working with the Parks Maintenance Supervisor and the DPW Director to get a list of itemized priorities for capital requests for the following year. The staff did not approach the, the commission this year for whatever reason. We will get back to that cycle. So when we were looking at the proper venue, knowing the staff had some concerns about this, underutilized, we, we can overcome the cost and maybe some additional costs that we incur with disruption of the pathway. We, we can, we can figure that piece of it out. But, you know, more to the story is the, the, the logic of adding a, adding a volleyball court when we have some underutilized courts, significant amount of underutilized courts elsewhere. So the staff struggled with this a bit. However, the did, it did come through the Parks and Recreation Commission as a, as a recommendation. I believe it might have been even unanimous. I'm not, not certain on that. So then we were talking about venue and usually a capital item would go to the Board of Public Works and Capital Assets. We took it there and we held it because Alderman Kuzakowski was not available for that meeting and we didn't have the background. I, I didn't realize you were at the November twentieth meeting. And then we kind of rethought that process because the Parks and Recreation Commission is really an advisory body to the common council, not the Board of Public Works and Capital Assets. So I think that in the normal course of a year, this would not have been as obtuse because you would have vetted this a little bit more at the CIP process through the Board of Public Works and then ultimately the council at our budget workshops. Now, group of volunteers came forward and put together, we think, a unanimous commission recommendation. So kind of to, to help satisfy, I think, everybody's concerns or requests via the positive recommendation. We thought, well, if some of them are underutilized, this is probably just as good of a place as any for a sand volleyball court. Especially if there's interest, albeit, you know, maybe, maybe small interests in the neighborhood to forward this recommendation from you with a consideration for the council to just go back to the Parks and Recreation Commission with some directive to look at one or two of those other underutilized volleyball courts and see from a maintenance perspective, if one of those needs to be taken out or if one of them can be repurposed into something more active or more, you know, more, more popular, if you will. So we're kind of trying to make everybody a little bit happy here, Rich, to be honest with you. But we thought this was a council, this was a council decision and not a Board of, of Public Works and Capital Assets decision. And that's why it's before you tonight.
Greg? Alderman Lorik, second district. This park's in my district. While it's not in my neighborhood, this is the second park in the district to benefit and get some, I guess, added amenities. As far as the concern about one resident, I don't have too much concern and I only base that on the micro park in. um, the micro park in the Apple Creek subdivision being put in. Um, I live in that neighborhood, there is a lot of people that, that spoke up and asked for it. However, when a public meeting was held, one family showed up. Um, so it, it, it kind of gives off the look like, oh, only one person wants this park, cause nobody showed up to the meeting. Um, but there was a lot of kind of combined effort, um, people speaking up and then when it comes down to it, one person being that spokesperson comes forward. Um, so I, I would hope that, um, it's not just one family and one child saying, hey, we, we want this for our kid. Um, speaking as a parent of a middle school daughter who just discovered volleyball and who loves it, um, unfortunately, as far as location, um, and other courts being underutilized, um, that could be an issue of, of the location. Um, my middle school daughter unfortunately can't drive to the other locations. So if something like this was put in an actual neighborhood, this neighborhood is very large and it's growing with the, the addition of the Glen Crossing, um, area. Um, younger kids are able to walk to the location, so maybe some of the under, underutilized courts are in areas that they would have to drive to if this didn't, didn't go through. Um, so, I mean, I support it. I think any addition to a park, um, whether it's a new park or new amenities is, is definitely a benefit. Um, but I also would support looking at some, some of the underutilized courts um, and see if some of the maintenance or, or funding can be shifted to this new one. So, thanks.
Do we know how far away one of the underutilized courts is from this location?
I'm, I'm sorry, I don't have, I don't have a work-
And I, I didn't have a chance to look it up either. Maybe I'd, I'd like to have one right in my backyard too, so. Sometimes, uh, if, life is rough.
Um, I have the same concerns with, uh, uh, that Rich has with regards to the underutilized courts and then we're gonna build another set. I, I'm not opposed to building it in this park for the use of the, the c- community, the, those that live by the park, but it seems like we have an incomplete report and picture here. It's simply saying we've got sev- we have nine courts, seven of them, of which are, are sand mostly underutilized is already brought up. I have no idea where those are. I'd like to know where those underutilized sand volleyball courts are before I make a decision on, on adding another one in another part of the city. And, you know, this is a very, very mi- yeah, yeah, I'm concerned with the damage that could be caused by the equipment building this court, okay, so obviously that would have to be done. And a very, very minor issue would be the, you know, laugh. But you're tearing down some, um, some trees that have been there a while. If you're gonna, if you're gonna cut those down, Parks Commission should think about planting some trees elsewhere there, just to kind of replace the trees that you've, uh, uh, you cut down. And lastly, if we're going to say decommission some underutilized sand volleyball courts, um, maybe we should think about, I mean, if you're gonna tear them apart and do something with the sand, maybe that sand could be brought over to the new court. I don't know, but that isn't even mentioned here as to whether or not you could, you know, repurpose sand from a underutilized court and bring it over to the new court. Might save a few bucks, so. Uh, again, I don't have a problem with building a new court, I just got some, 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 uh, some questions that can't be answered tonight and, uh, uh, as far as tonight, I would not support it tonight, maybe in the future I would. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Um, I am, I'm, uh, Parks. For the original meeting, uh, that they had, uh, when they originally talked about it in tw- on November twenty twenty, I wasn't at that meeting either. It was right before hunting season, so I actually was gone uh, from that meeting, so I don't have any feel one way or the other for what the commission, um, uh, it was talking about and, uh, what they're looking for as a whole, so.
Uh, we do have somebody wishing to speak and, uh, weigh in and name and address, please.
Hi, I'm Nicole Terlay and my address is nine thirty-six West Glen Crossing Court and I live on that beautiful park. My house is right on there and I'm the resident who brought this to the, um, Park Commission a couple of years ago. Um, I'm a, I'm a youth volleyball coach here in Oak Creek and the sport for girls and the sport has just really increased tremendously. And I'm sitting here and I actually know some of the answers to your questions. There are seven courts, sand courts in Oak Creek and I believe four of them have a men's height net. Three of them have a women's height net. And the net can't be adjusted, like, once it's put up for the season, the Parks Commission has said it's set for the season. Uh, it's really hard for my young girls to use a men's height net. Um, and another issue with the underutilization of some of the parks, one was by Cedar Hills School, which is off of Twenty-seventh Street. That is quite a drive, um, for our kids who, who are riding their bikes to come, you know, practice volleyball. Um, I think one was outside of Target. There's like, um, Park Oak Park or that one. And I believe the Chapel Hills and, um, the overutilized ones are the women's ones with the women's height net and one was at Meadowview Park. That's the one I currently drive to. And I do try to get the girls there, but that one's very popular. And there's plenty of times I've even made a reservation and people are using the court at the time and you, you don't wanna be rude and bump people off. So, uh, we put in a request and, um, it was approved by the Parks Commission after two separate meetings. Um, you had, let's see. Some other que- you had a question about which ones were underutilized?
Oh, the location of, of one of the nearby parks.
And so the closest one, I think, that was the one that we use with a women's height net is the, um, Meadowview one. Um, off of Oakwood and Shepherd area. Um, it's about a ten-minute drive.
I believe in the master plan, Aben Shain called for one and it never got it. Way back when.
But my husband and I also, we offered to, I know there'd be six trees torn down. I live in that park and I walk through the park every day, a couple of times a day with my dogs. Two of those trees are hollowed out trees and there is there's drugs and alcohol in those trees all the time that we have to clean up. So I'm glad actually two of those trees would be gone. And my husband and I did offer to donate six trees to replace those if the Parks Commission would plant, um, young trees in our park, cause we love the, the park too. But I put this out on our neighborhood Facebook and we got tremendous support from our whole, our whole neighborhood. There's girls playing, um, on the tennis courts right now. They play volleyball, we see them. And I can't wait to snag them for my team, so, and if your daughter too. But we love volleyball and I know it would be used. And, um, really appreciate your time. I didn't know how to fill out the-
Oh, no, you're fine, you're fine. You're fine. Yeah. So is this gonna be just one sand volleyball court proposed or there's two here?
Yes, one.
So is there, in your experience with, um, um, the volley- volleyball program for, for kids, are there mechanisms out there where the nets can go up and down? Because if Parks, if the Parks Commission or there are Parks and Rec folks have got, they're not being utilized or you have ones that are overutilized, um, then maybe there needs to be some sort of modification to courts where eh, the, these nets can be raised and lowered so that if you have all these girls teams that wanna use them and the men's, men's height aren't being used, can, you know, raise and lower them like you can basketball nets and, and, um-
That would be nice.
Uh, and by the way, I, it's my understanding, if you have a reservation or a permit for a court and you show up and somebody's using it, you politely walk up to them and show them your permit and say, sorry folks, you gotta leave. Uh, you're very gracious to not, uh, to do that.
You know, it's, it's just-
But, you know, you, you put your time and energy into reserving a court, you should use it, uh, uh, when the city says you can, so. Are there mechanisms? Does anybody know? I, I would hate to build a court and then accidentally put in the men's height when it's the women's height that we need and, or whatever.
I'm not, there, I don't know if that's exist, but I know for the Oak Creek, um, poles, they said that you, they couldn't. They could set it once for the season and that was it and it would be really difficult to change. But, um, another thing, when I have girls coming from, you know, different neighborhoods and riding their bikes there, it's also an issue to use the restroom. A lot of the places, I guess the, the one outside of Target probably has restrooms. And luckily, my sister lives by the Meadowview Park, so there's restrooms there, but Glen Crossing, at least a lot of us live close enough to walk to a bathroom, but just wanted to share our, the point of view from us, but.
And, and I appreciate you coming up and, and providing some information to the questions that I had. Um, for Doug and, and for council, I would recommend, I mean, obviously, there's, there's some more work that staff needs to do to get information about those, as Steve mentioned, those multi-use poles, nets. Uh, and then if you had mentioned that some of the men's courts are the ones that are in fact being underutilized, I get a pretty easy suggestion for that. Make it, make it a girls' court if those adjustable nets or holds aren't available, so o- obviously, we need to do some research on, on use and-
I, I guess I wouldn't suggest having something that's adjustable because we, we have to avoid having someone go out there every time it changes. But you're right, if there's demand is there for a, a, a smaller, the lower net size, and that's and that's probably the answer.
Be my number two, yes.
Okay, Greg, I got a question for you.
Oh, yes, sir.
Um, the girls' teams you're coaching, are you, you're playing inside, right, to, to sand volleyball? You're not actually playing sand volleyball as a league or a club, or, or are you?
Correct, we're indoor, but, um, uh, for volleyball, we're only allowed to use the West Middle School Gym and when we put in a facility use request and it is booked a lot. So if we can get extra practices, we have used the sand courts for practice and, and for extra practice and it's really fun. It's a great recreation activity.
Okay, Greg?
Um, I'll just, I guess echo what you brought up. I, my daughter's on the West Middle School team. Um, I believe the East Middle School has two teams, cause they had so many girls that were interested. Um, and I would definitely support, um, going through with this, making sure that it's put in at a girl's height. Um, and then still looking at the, the men's courts that are underutilized and looking into either changing them down to women's heights or decommissioning those ones since they're underutilized. Um, but that, that's, I mean, that's what I would support.
Thank you.
Um, real quickly, this is in my neighborhood actually and, um, my daughter played volleyball a long time back as well. Uh, wasn't there, she probably got a lot of use out of it, cause there was nowhere to go. Um, little bit about Willow Heights, when I got there, there was actually an exercise stations all around this park. And, uh, as times changed, it all went away. Um, the swing set went away, I went to a play set, the, the park evolved with the neighborhood, so to speak. And I built my house probably thirty years ago and it was kind of reflected in this neighborhood. Glen Crossing's probably about ten, but if you look to the subdivision to the west, that's about twenty-five, thirty years old. And everything you see to the east is the same. Um, as our children all aged and went on to college, we tore out, you know, years ago, we tore it out and we put in pickleball. And I'm not saying that's a mature person's sport, but I didn't know what it was. And then they're, they're hugely popular, so this park has evolved over time and I'm sure other parks have too. This is just an involvement and as Greg said, if, if they're not using them at other places, wherever they may be, cause I don't know where the seven are either. Um, you know, maybe it's needed and it's time, I mean, if you wanna investigate it more, great. Um, but if it's gonna be utilized, excellent. Um, it's one of these things that we never just design something and there it stays forever, you know? Um, you know, put it this way, as she said, I, I'm not a Facebook person, there may be a lot of people out there demanding those things. Other decisions have been made because people have demanded things on Facebook too, quite frankly. Um, but if you'd listen to some groups, they say we don't have enough baseball. They, they would put two more baseball fields in here too. I've never yet gotten a, I've gotten talks from people who are baseball enthusiasts that want baseball, but I've never had a resident say we don't have enough baseball fields yet. From all I understand, they're under, they're underutilized. Oh, no, I, I know, no, I know, I said-
I'm sure so, I'm sure other, although-
From the base, from the baseball enthusiasts. But I'm just saying from a, just a parent in the neighborhood, you know, their kids have plenty of fields to play on. It's, it's the leagues and things like that, so. I get it, um, it's just an involvement of the park, if you guys wanna explore it more and you know, there's different things that could go on, maybe, maybe it goes in a different section of the park, I don't, I don't know. But, uh, again, like I say, we don't build a park and it just stays static like that forever, because I can tell you Willow Heights in the thirty years I've been there, it's changed tremendously. Actually, there's kind of a sledding hill there, we call it. Baby hill there too, that ain't shown, but.
Mayor?
Yes. Eh, the number of questions we raised tonight, I don't think are too complicated that couldn't prevent us from holding this matter until the next meeting. I mean, we're just talking about locations of the other parks and some statistical stuff about those underutilized ones and even my little suggestion about, you know, okay, we'll get rid of this park and we'll try and drag the sand over, stuff like that, so I, I, it seems like we could short order and have this for the next meeting and then bathrooms are a problem, not only at Willow Heights, but I'm sure at others and, uh-
Are there bathrooms there, Dan?
No, there are not, um.
I can't tell if those are-
No, they, they have a, um, gazebo there, picnic area.
Okay.
Uh, the kids' play area. Uh, the tennis, the pickleball courts. Basketball's really utilized there, a lot of people utilize that. Uh, baseball's pretty popular there too, I think, so. But, you know, Glen Crossing, it's just, it's kind of odd as I look at my neighborhood now. Um, you know, people have built, are moving on and retiring and younger people are coming in with kids and the uses they want are far different than what we had, you know? Um, just different.
There's a lot more housing that's not shown on that map, that's for sure.
Oh.
There you go.
Um, but it's a, it's a nice park, it's a very nice area, so.
It is. Thank you so much. Thank you for your time.
You're welcome, I guess, thank you.
That's my question, I guess.
So if, if, if that's your choice, I'm, I'm good with it.
Well, way, like I say, I, I don't blame you.
Not that I wanna delay this.
Any further, but would potentially you wanna send this back to the Parks Commission to do some of this work? So you're not architecting on the fly or would you like it just to come back? If that's the case, uh, perhaps it's the second meeting in May as opposed to the first, just in case there's a, I don't know when, when the next Parks Commission meeting meets.
Andrew? I, maybe the Parks Commission doesn't need to do it, just maybe Parks and Rec can, can, eh, eh, at, at Oak Creek, you know, the, our joint venture can come up with statistics and locations on the underutilized parks. They don't, they don't make this stuff.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't think that you'll ever, if you're looking for a, well, the sand volleyball court at X Park is used sixty-four percent of the time, that data does not exist.
And then, and then, uh, Matt can come up with a, you know, i- idea and, on, you know, uh, if there's damage, you know, what type of equipment, uh, we'll fix it and we can drag sand over or whatever, fencing or, and the net, net issue and stuff like that. Doesn't really, I don't think it has to be the Parks Commission, just needs to be somebody really, it's fun.
Okay, and, and just one more question, is there an entity that exists that we could ask on the boys or slash men's side? The, the men's high, does the men's, or does the high school have a boys volleyball program?
They do, but I, I mean, I would think most of this goes on permanent.
You know, here's, here's my take, if you'll, if you, if you allow me, I, I think that these are not being used for competitions. It's a volleyball net, eh, eh, we can practice on and if it needs to be lower, lower to accommodate more people, boys or girls, I think that's what we should do.
Out there to play.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's right, I'm sure there's no high school teams out there having leagues. There's kids out there having fun. They're practicing like, like your team.
You'll build their self-esteem because boy, they're gonna think that they're getting up there with some nasty spikes.
Okay, um, we need an action on seventeen to move on. So, uh, what's the flavor, guys? Hold it till you gather more information?
I, well, if I make the motion, I don't personally need to hold it, but I don't wanna make the motion if it's gonna be no's and it's gonna be shut down. Great to do it too. Yeah, right, so I guess that's, my question is to the flavor, do I make the motion and if it gets shot down, can it be brought back? Or do I hold it, thinking that it's gonna get more yes votes the next time?
Why, with our city attorney gone?
Cause I don't, I, I don't want it shot down, cause I do think that this is needed. Because I don't, I I don't want it shot down because I do think that this is needed.
I I would, I would hold it and confer with uh with staff and uh figure out how to make it go.
Okay.
Or work.
And will that be the May third?
We get that done.
For the May seventeen.
Seventeenth, please.
May seventeenth. Okay. Oracle move to hold the approval of the construction of a sand volleyball court at Willow Heights Park at a cost not to exceed twenty-eight thousand dollars uh till the next scheduled Common Council meeting of May seventeenth twenty twenty-two.
Dufnyak second. Roll call.
Alderman Dufnyak.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Okay, um, that will be held till the seventeenth, so you can make plans to get back. And if you have a question, please call your alderman and he'll keep you in the loop. Okay? Item eighteen, uh, considera- consideration of a resolution approving a certified survey map submitted by Dave David Decker, Decker Properties Inc. for the properties at eighty-one hundred eighty-one forty-six South Twenty Seventh Street and eighty-one hundred South Orchard Way. Uh, Doug, you got a workout tonight.
Very briefly to summarize, uh, this CSM was approved by the Frank Commission and Common Council uh last year, uh, was never recorded and now it's um it's it's passed its deadline, so it needs to be reapproved.
So Doug laid that out really great. It was really just a timing issue. We've done it before. So if there's no discussions or questions, uh, motion on eighteen, please.
Ork moves to adopt resolution number one, two, three, two, four, dash, zero, four, one, nine, two, two, approving a certified survey map submitted by David Decker, Decker Properties Inc. For the properties at eighty-one hundred and eighty-one forty-six South Twenty Seventh Street and eighty-one hundred South Orchard Way.
Dufnyak second.
Roll call.
Alderman Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Dufnyak.
Aye. And item nineteen will get us to the license committee. I'll turn that over to Alderman Kirkowski. Thank you, Mayor. I trust everybody's had an opportunity to review the items on the Common Council report. Does anybody have any questions, cares, or concerns? All right, seeing none, Kirkowski make a motion to approve the various license requests as listed on the April nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-two License Committee Report.
Dufnyak second. Roll call.
Alderman Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Dufnyak.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
And item twenty is consideration of a motion to approve the vendor summary report for April fifth, two thousand and twenty-two. The amount of four hundred thousand four hundred thirty-two thousand, nine hundred ninety-seven dollars and four cents. So please take a look. And if you have any questions, uh, feel free to speak up. Satisfied, there's no questions. Uh, motion, please.
We'll move to approve the April five, two thousand and twenty-two vendor summary report in the amount of four hundred thirty-two thousand, nine hundred ninety-seven dollars, four cents.
Dufnyak second.
Roll call.
Alderman Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Dufnyak.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
And before we adjourn, just a couple of things, uh, very quickly. Tomorrow, uh, the city will be at the Oak Creek Community Center at seven thirty uh for networking and eight o'clock, we'll have State of the City down at the city of at the Oak Creek Community Center. So uh, public is welcome. The South, the South Suburban Chamber of Commerce is putting that on. And we have our ever-popular uh birthday cleanup event uh Saturday right here at Drexel Town Square. There's also, they're doing it down at the Historical Society. So if you have a civic group or you just have a family, want to get out, get some exercise, please come join me as we clean up the preserve. We start at nine AM. We'll have the bags, the gloves, the vests and uh the picture taking going on. So it's going to be a beautiful day. Come join us if possible.
Mayor, if I may add, I think wasn't, is Bender Park on that list as well?
I think so.
Oh, thank you.
The Beach at Bender. So, you know, we'll take roadways. We'll we'll do whatever we got to do to keep Oak Creek clean.
And my wife and I took a ride by Bender Monday, Tuesday. It is embarrassingly jer- it it's bad.
Yeah, the winter leaves a lot, but so does the public. So we need to do our part.
Our health department is uh campaigning that, that's right.
Right, yeah. So we we actually have quite a bit of interest. I have a a group coming. Leslie has some good signups. So again, please come out and join us. And if you got questions, it's a great time to ask your questions. Talk while you're you're improving the community. So uh, hopefully some of the aldermen can join us and I'll be here before nine o'clock. So. Okay, with that, adjournment. Kirkowski make a motion to adjourn. Oracle second. Roll call.
Alderman Lorik.
Aye.
Dufnyak.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Okay, thank you all. Appreciate it.